Good evening. Okay, let us call, uh, we'll begin our call of order. And we begin by prayer, the pledge of allegiance, if you folks don't mind. Let's stand, uh, in prayer. And we'll say the pledge of allegiance. Father, we just come before you on this day, this twenty-eighth day of October two thousand and twenty-four, Father. And each day stands by itself. And we just thank you for it, and we thank you for the time we've had together with family and friends. Father, we thank you for the time tonight to be able to come together as citizens and business people, Father, of Scottsburg, Indiana, and we just pray your blessing over them. We pray, Father, for wisdom and discernment in all these areas. Thank you, Father, for this council, and we pray for your wisdom and, and insight, Father, into their areas and what needs to be done, and we pray to bring the right people, Father, in all of these areas. We love you, we praise you, and pray for the peace of Jerusalem. Just then we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, your name is. Uh, we have our roll call by our press editors asked this evening, so, uh, Ms. Jill is sitting in. So we'll have Ms. Jill get her roll call.
Tim Law.
Here.
Rick Cozart.
Here.
Kevin Smallwood.
Here.
Richie Barton.
Martin Nicholson.
Here.
Thank you, Jill. The next thing on our approval of minutes of October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, there's been a little bit of a typo. So we need to amend the twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, should have been a twenty twenty-four dash eighteen. So we would accept the motion to, uh, to go forward with these minutes with the, with that title change.
I'm making a motion to go ahead and do the amendment for the right number twenty-four fifteen, oh, yeah, it should have been eighteen. Twenty twenty-four eighteen, I'm making a motion and approve the minutes.
Motion made by Councilman Cozart, is your second.
I'll second him.
Mark second, is that any questions, comments about this? Harry Neville, can you see I?
Aye.
Opposed? Inadents, thank you very much. When out comes to the public comment period of the city of Scottsburg Council, accept public comments, individuals wishing to address the council, we ask to come forward, state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Your remarks should focus on issues and not to be used to target city employees or elected officials. We'll open this up for anybody here that would like to make public comments about your neighbor playing a kazoo or whatever. Going once, going twice, going twice, closed. It's going now to new business, our first, our first entry is Eric Lowery. Mr. Lowery, would you please come forward?
I'm not here alone. Joining me tonight is Cheryl Torline, most of you probably know Cheryl. Cheryl is Scottsburg's own Aunt Bee.
Well, yes, right.
Yes, she dresses as Aunt Bee at our Mayberry Festival. And we've just come again to thank you for all the support that the city gave us this year for the festival, all the teams that worked so hard and made it such a great weekend. I, I've heard many, many comments about what a good time the folks had. As a matter of fact, I just came back from Minnery, North Carolina, the big festival, and people down there were asking and talking about it. Several of our celebrities said, listen, we love Scottsburg and we love coming, and we hope that we can get a chance to come back this next year too. So simply, we're here to thank you for all that you guys have done to support, uh, the festival, and we've already started having some discussions about next year. So we are certainly hopeful that we can be able to do it one more time, and we'll be back with some more details about that as, as things come together. Had a, a discussion with our business commission, or, or, what is your title, is it chairman, is it director?
I'm treasurer. I'm treasurer of the.
Oh, behind you, honey, behind you. But whatever, we gotta talk about Chris. Whatever Mr. Waitman's title is, we've had conversations and met with them over there too. So we're really looking forward to seeing if we can do this one more time. Uh, but I also am here to present to the city this little truck.
Wow.
It was handmade by one of our volunteers, Philip from Missouri. And he and his wife have come and have been very supportive of, of the event, uh, for both years. And he made this truck, and it's signed by, uh, almost all of our tribute artists, several of the celebrities that were here. And he made it specifically so that it could be signed for everyone, and it could be presented to the city to be displayed somewhere in appreciation for all that the city has done to help make our festival a success.
Thank you, thank you.
And hopefully you'll be able to find a, a place for it somewhere. And when you guys look at it, you'll remember the fun that we've had and how much that you guys are all appreciated, everyone from the elected officials down to all the employees and all the staff. You guys were very, very great, supportive, and we appreciate it.
And thank you, guys, for coming here with Andy and Opie and Barney and Aunt Bee and, and the judge and the mayor here and, and all the folks that come. And just have such a wonderful time on this three-day weekend, it's just wonderful, people coming from all over. Uh, tarnation, as it were, fortunately to, uh, you know, where we're in Cincinnati.
I think we had twelve states represented this year.
Twelve states, wow.
Uh, I believe we filled over three hundred hotel room nights for the weekend. So this, I think it was a good thing for the city and the county as well as a good thing just for all of us who enjoyed it.
Absolutely, absolutely, so thank you, thank you, thank you. We have, gentlemen, we have, when we moved out to the Mid-America Science Park, we have a case out there, kind of between, uh, when you come in, it's kind of back there down the hallway there a little bit, and we'll put that in our case, that be okay?
That's wonderful, I think that'd be a, a great place for it, we appreciate that.
You gotta put a Mayberry over the truck and somebody.
Yeah, somebody I'm sure can be creative and find a way to actually set that in and present it in appropriate manner, so. But again, that's all we've come to do is just to thank you for all of your support, and we'll come back when we have some more details, but we're already starting to talk about next year.
Does council have any questions for? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda this evening is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, ordinance establishing hamper and after hour. Yes, yes, let's just, let's go ahead and skip over those and move down to the resolution. D, a resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash six, preliminary declaration. Uh, the, the, like, like. Declaratory resolution designated an economic. And approving a tax abatement, I need to talk slow. So, uh, uh, if you've had a chance to look over the resolution twenty twenty-four dash R six, or maybe, let me, let Josh explain this. Or let John explain this.
You want me to?
Happy to, happy to come up and, and assist, or can I talk a little about the resolution and then?
I mean, as far as the, uh, the resolution goes, so this is just the process to start the tax abatement process under Indiana law. We do a preliminary resolution, and then there has to be a public hearing. You have to give, uh, ten days' notice prior to, uh, that hearing, so that can be on next meeting, so that will be the end of the month, so that'd be the, uh, November twenty-fifth, is that what I have? November twenty-fifth meeting, um, it would be back on the agenda for a public hearing, and then there's a confirmatory resolution. So between now and then, if there's any additions, any changes or whatever we can make to the resolution, uh, after you hear any public comment, if there's any changes to the resolution, um, at that time. But as laid out, um, this is our standard abatement schedule that the city has used in the past. Real estate is to be, were abated over a ten-year period. Personal property is over a five-year period. And to be clear, uh, tax abatement, this isn't, this has to be new stuff. So it's not like, hey, we take your tax bill now and we give you tax deduction, it's, you have to do something in addition. So it takes your tax as it is now, um, and for example, on the real estate, I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand square foot new building, does sound right, that they're proposing to build. Uh, so that will obviously have a new taxable amount to it. Uh, so that is where the abatement comes, so when that hits the tax rules, the first year will be a hundred percent abatement, all the way down to the five percent, and then after that, a hundred percent, uh, back to the city, back to the tax rules.
Perfect.
And then there's obviously salaries, personal property, there's lots of personal. Additional and, and. Yeah, and there's, there's a lot of additional, um, it is an exempt district, I mean, there's a lot of benefits to the city, uh, to this project.
When will the public hearing, what can be, John, you said?
November twenty-fifth.
Again, John Lowery, uh, in the honor of leading the economic development team in one southern Indiana for the past several years, we've had a contractual relationship, uh, with, uh, Scott County to offer these services, and grateful to have been, uh, that contract to be renewed, so you got me for another year at minimum, uh, but it really has been an honor to work with you, you know, uh, economic development in terms of attraction, retention, expansion, uh, aren't things that happen overnight, you really have to, uh, uh, begin working with the community to be able to really understand their assets, uh, to be able to start getting into the pipeline for projects, building relationships. And so, uh, just over one year ago, we were, uh, very excited to introduce you to Conco, who took the ten-ten, we're owed properly, El Tucuson, uh, facility. And, uh, over the past year, uh, they've been doing, uh, significant renovations, uh, to that building to prepare for the initial investment that they made, uh, which was announced at about fifty-five million dollars and a hundred and seventy-five employees paying twenty-eight dollars an hour, uh, which at the time was around a little over thirty percent over the county average wage. So, uh, as they've gotten that equipment and they're starting to kind of build that workforce, uh, we are here again tonight, uh, with an exciting opportunity to, again, partner with Conco and partner with the state, uh, to welcome a new plan of investment, uh, which would, uh, be just over seventy million dollar total capital investment into that project, uh, adding an additional hundred and seventy-five employees so that full operation would bring that onsite headcount to three hundred and fifty, which would easily put them into the top five employers within the county. Uh, just a couple of points to, to maybe piggyback onto what Josh said on some of the other ancillary benefits of this project. Uh, that does, that, that twenty-one thirty-five represents roughly eleven million annually in recurring payroll. So I like to remind folks, that's not a kind of one-time deal, uh, that's an annual recurring benefit, uh, from the tax of capital going, uh, to those, those payroll coffers. So, uh, just a quick math, in the past year, uh, Conco is, is, would collectively be investing, uh, right at a hundred and twenty-five million, uh, into their facility, uh, and take that total headcount to three hundred and fifty, which brings that annual recurring payroll to two hundred, uh, sorry, to twenty million dollars of annualized payroll through those employee headcount. So, um, as Josh mentioned, we're here tonight, uh, to bring for you an opportunity to support the project. I would also like to note that the state of Indiana, the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, also has an edge tax credit that is on the table for the company as well, uh, but that would, uh, only be authorized with a local level of support. So, uh, the state is fully supportive of this project, uh, and is willing to get behind the locals to, to make sure that Conco is, is successful, uh, not only for this project, but what we hope is a, a continued relationship with the city. I am lucky to have with us the leadership team, uh, from Conco, uh, including Drew Schnee, uh, their newest, uh, colleague there, Joe Skidmore, the CFO, and then Karen Pascal, uh, their CEO. Uh, and if it would be allowed, we would love to introduce Karen to have her, maybe share a little bit about the plans for the site.
Absolutely.
Want to come up there?
Yeah, please.
So appreciate you all having us here again tonight, uh, John said we were here just about a year ago. So we, the first phase of this project is, is off and running, we're bringing in a lot of equipment, and, uh, we've got a very small crew there now that will be adding to that, uh, very soon. And now we're ready to move on to the second phase that will, that will start while we complete the first one. So, uh, as Josh mentioned, we're gonna add a hundred and fifty thousand square feet to the property and, uh, hold up a production line, so.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome.
We're pretty excited and we're happy to be part of the community here and, uh, excited to see where the stakes is.
We're excited to, to have you come. As you may or may not know, there was eighty-some-odd acres that went with the purchase. So they have the area that they could go forward and add on a hundred and fifty thousand square foot building, more if should they wish to. So this is just a blessing for Scottsburg and a blessing for Conco as well. That's what we want, win-win for it.
Absolutely, for sure. We're very happy to be here.
Fantastic job as well.
Again, we work with a handful of companies, and there's something refreshing about a company that's willing to engage pretty immediately, and I know there's already been conversations and partnerships with the city to ensure that they are a good neighbor, and I'm just excited about the future.
He's gonna be like the matchmaker, I guess.
He's done a great job. He's done a great job.
He has, he has, for sure. What questions does council have?
The, the expansion part, is that, is that a separate building or will it be connected to the current building?
It'll be connected, it'll be a separate building.
Now, we're starting, so. There'll be causeways, it'll be on the east side. On the east side? Sixty-five, I sixty-five side. Uh, there's a parking lot there for the building, it would sit, there's a fill that's already cleared and leveled just beside it, that it would set up.
East of the parking area.
Uh, it is north, directly north of.
North of the area.
Yeah. East of the building.
The problem is, it's probably a three-minute to get back on sixty-five. Well, that's one great thing about Scottsburg being located right here, I mean, you're within basically four, five hours.
Absolutely.
Major cities in America.
Good location.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, and you own it, that's perfect. What other questions do you have?
What's the timeline for that, for completion?
Of the second phase, we should be in production in twenty twenty-six, so mid-year is our goal. The first, the first production line, first phase, it should be operational in March, that's what I'm thinking.
So you're gonna kind of start up operation in, in, in the first quarter?
Uh, yes.
Maybe, maybe share a little about your current headcount, maybe it's a general timeline, and then it's called twelve months of ramp up.
So, so currently, we have, we only have about six hourly people, uh, about sixteen or so total with the salary group we have in there. We're bringing on about twenty, probably between now and the end of the year. Uh, and then in the first few months of twenty twenty-five, that's when the huge, you know, the big ramp up will be, so. We'll start bringing in a much larger group at that time, and by March, you know, we should, we should have the majority of them in.
That's good, that's good. You're also purchasing sixty million in equipment, sixty million dollars in equipment?
The, the first investment, I think that's the building and equipment, sixty million total. Yeah.
So huge investment, uh, so thank you very much, what other questions do you have?
But by March, you're expecting to have a pretty much a hundred and seventy-five?
Pretty much, yeah.
That includes sixteen. That includes sixteen you have now, so.
And then as the new building comes online in twenty-six, they would then add the additional employees for that?
Correct, correct.
It sounds like a very interesting project, and I think it'll be very good for the community. We need better-paying jobs around here anyway, and, uh, pretty impressive with your paperwork here and what you've got going on, and, um, I think it's a great thing, thank you for coming to Scott County, Scottsburg.
Thank you for having us.
Partner for us here and for our, uh, young people growing up, maybe they'll stay here, so, thank you.
We hope so, yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
I would note that this round of, uh, this newest round has an average wage, uh, at full build-out of thirty dollars an hour. Currently, Scott County is at twenty-one thirty-five an hour, so again, you're about thirty, uh, percent over your, your, your average county wage right now.
It looks like you're gonna have a childcare out there for your folks as well.
There's a property, or there's a, a building there on the property, we haven't figured out exactly how we could.
You have been doing some remodeling work to that building at the time.
I'm sorry.
They have been doing some remodeling work to that building?
Uh, well, they, they did go in and, and do some, yeah, some work to see what kind of structure we had there, I guess to see if it is recoverable, but we haven't actually started doing it at this time.
We could do a credit project though, wouldn't we?
Yeah. Ready to, we're certainly looking forward to that as well. But what a, what a great thing, thank you, guys, very much, you've got, I think, a great deal of property and, and you've got a good workforce here, you've got a very strategic infrastructure here for you as well, so, so thank you, thank you for the work and much you do with it.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you. John, thank you very much. So the force this evening is resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash six. Is there a motion to go forward and pass this?
I'll make a motion.
Kevin makes a motion, is your second?
I'll second.
Rick second, is that, any questions, comments? Harry Neville, can you see I?
Aye.
Opposed? Inadents, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back up to D with ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, ordinance establishing hamper and after hour. Please, the city of Scottsburg Department of Water Works. If you have a chance to look through that, table over that, who will answer questions for you?
Uh, no, I have actually been, but we cut the water off for my payment, and we always went in groups of twos because you know what was gonna happen next, and most of the time it was the same people every month. They'd come out and holler at you, cuss at you, threaten you, and then by the time we get back up to City Hall, they would have one of their major meetings, we had to waste time and go all the way back down there to drink that. Yeah, but the same people, month after month after month. And it's kind of scary, we've tried locking meters up, we've tried taking the meters out, they put jumpers in. So, yeah, this is ordinance, I thought it had been passed a year ago. So, it's a good ordinance, and it, it, it don't bring.
You make the motion to go forward with the ordinance then?
Yes, I'll make the motion, yeah.
So Rick Neville makes the motion, motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mark second, is that, any questions? Harry Neville, can you see I?
Aye.
Opposed? Matthew Anderson, first reading. Is the result go forward on second, third, or just leave it as it is?
I'm gonna say it as it is. Big one, eh?
Suspender.
I'll make a motion, suspender.
So Martin Nicholson makes the motion, this is for the rules, is there a second? Run once, run twice, pass on first, and, uh, we'll read the other two of the next, next council meetings. We got the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty, ordinance in menu chapter eighty-six, article six of the city of Scottsburg, Indiana, code of ordinances regulating abandoned vehicles. If you've read this, through this, will answer any questions, we have Chief Barton here, any questions for Chief Barton? Any questions? Harry Neville, we will ask for an ordinance, ask for a motion to pass ordinance twenty-four, twenty-four dash twenty, amend chapter eighty-six, article six, to discuss. Is there a motion?
I'll make some.
Martin Nicholson makes the motion to pass on first reading, is there a second?
Um, I have a question, are these for, say, a car they park in front of their house, they'll move it for three days, but that may be considered an abandoned vehicle?
If a car's not, if a car is there and not moved for three days, are your officers not, I mean, they're not chalking tires, are they changing?
No, no, that would be a, a vehicle that we would get a complaint on, and we would put the seventy-two hour on it, and then if it's not moved in the seventy-two hours, that's when it would be done.
This ordinance is basically for cars that have been left, been working on, have been left, tanks are expired for three years, it's been, uh...
It's produced, it's a vehicle, basically, you know.
Say again, please, Chief?
Yeah, if it's, if it's a continued problem, that's what it's here for.
Yeah.
To address that.
Counsel, do you have any information on this as well as you want to add to?
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be something that's, you know, structured in the flow of traffic, not V-tag, something along those lines, or just not, it's something that's just legally parked and not driven for a few days.
The city of Scottsburg is wanting to clean ourselves up here, and this is a tool by which we have junky cars sitting out here, junky cars sitting, cars and trucks sitting out here, this gives us a, a bit of a tool to be able to remove those, that's what we're asking.
I, I have no problem with the orders, but I think we're gonna have to figure out some kind of orders to keep the cars off the streets. At night, I have a parking, I go down the road, and then that when the light comes on, you can't see cars sitting there. You know, with Karen, we're just living the same way, both sides of the street, full cars. Most days on certain, just certain parts of town, but that becomes a real pain in the back. My son, he was still alive, he had a car, he had a car like that, the light, there was no lights on or nothing. He came down, looked over the side, saw a cat or something, and then back, he crashed, and back to the car. Because it's sitting there in the dark with no light.
The city's paying, the city's paying the electric company almost nine thousand dollars a month for lights. So if you have, if you have lights that are not on, so you can see the vehicles, please let me know. We can change a bulb, or we can put a pole up and put a light here for you if you need. So if you want to try to keep the presence of a lot of cars down, then, then council will need to probably bring in an ordinance before the council to be able to.
Yeah, we have to pass it, ordinance, and then you have to have signage.
I have no problem with that, so, okay, well, we'll get back to what we were talking about, I'll make a motion to go ahead for the, uh, the abandoned cars.
Thank you, Rick Cozart makes the motion to go forward.
I think Mark ordered it.
Oh, Mark did, so, so, so Rick's second, sorry about that. So Rick's second in that, uh, ordinance on abandoned vehicles, twenty twenty-four dash twenty. I swear, a motion and a second, any other questions? Harry Neville, can you see I?
Aye.
Opposed? Inadents, passes on first reading. Will I let that just, which one is? Will I let that go as well? So the next thing we have, we've already gone through D with Conco, let's go down to C now, our E, economic industrial development due board loan recommendation on Westwood Golf LLC. Do you guys know what this is?
I don't remember.
This is on, on E, economic industrial development, or due board loan recommendation. So who's on, who's on the economic?
Me and Kevin.
So you and Kevin, so you guys wanna talk about this one?
No. No, it's, it's, uh, Stella Amick, Tiffany Chandler.
All a bunch of bankers.
Yes, all loan officers.
All the loan.
Yes.
And they give a favorable?
They have, yes, they passed five, five-oh, recommendation was sent to Josh, Tigen. They, they've decided the rate and the amount, uh, he brings in all this financial paperwork. Uh, I would tell you, Jan was at the meeting and spoke, uh. The gentleman has borrowed from the city two, at least two other times, paid off early. Jan was very favorable recommendation on him, uh, getting the money. He did decide to take less than what he originally came in with, uh, it, I'm allowed to say what it's worth, right? It's for.
Yeah, sure.
It's for golf carts.
For the poker.
Okay, it's for golf carts, he brought in, uh, a quote, um, the board requested that when he takes the old golf court carts and sells them, he is bringing, uh, half of that lump sum to pay towards this loan immediately, so, um...
How many golf carts do you want to buy?
I wanna, I wanna say it was thirty, ten, but I could be, I could be wrong on that.
I would take the products, financial workers, so we could look at their income, what they make, what they're spending out. I know these loan officers are doing their job, but I think we should have a debate. You know, I, I got a lot of golfers this weekend, and they, that's kind of an exception, because golf is an option, not a right. because golf is an option, not a right. And I used to golf, I had a little problem with golf. But I think a hundred fifty thousand dollar for a golf cart, I don't know, that kind of thing, well, they get it, they relax. I think it's ridiculous, I think it's way too much money and this, I would love to see the paperwork on how much money that golf course makes.
What's a golf cart, car?
I heard that anybody who's paid.
Five thousand?
They go ten thousand dollars. And on what, what kind of ones? I bought a used one a couple of weeks ago, I did down. Twenty-twenty-two model, I gave five thousand for it, so.
I will tell you, he brought in the quote for cheaper, cheaper carts, he was not getting brand-new ones.
Or are you getting new ones in?
Well, I don't think they're brand, brand-new.
And all the electric carts, I take it probably.
I think so, right.
Well, a hundred and fifty thousand, the bottom of the card is five thousand.
Five thousand pieces.
Probably, if you buy a fleet of them, I think they're probably what's in there somewhere in there.
But, anyway.
It's not like it could end here, there's no way I can vote for this without, there's just no way I can vote for it and justify that much money going to a golf cart at the golf course. I just, that just seems like a goddamn irony. So I know we're gonna vote on, I'm gonna vote no, without my financial, I can see. I mean, sure, we got people on these boards that are loaning the money, but I don't know, everybody I've talked to just thought that was just a weird excess of money and they never heard that's what's happening. So for my district and my people, we're gonna, I'm voting no.
Just to me, yeah, it's a loan, it's a price.
Yeah, but we don't know how much they make a month. I don't know how much a golf cart, I mean, how much they make a year.
Is that, is that information check with the committee? They give a favorable recommendation, do they have that information as far as his income and so forth?
Are you gonna get tax returns and everything or are they on the invoice?
Whatever request they get.
So per the hammerization on this, the city would, the finance charge, I mean, assuming, he has paid them off in the past, but it would be a twenty-eight thousand dollar finance charge to be factored in the loan fund for the city to loan to other companies.
Be less than that if he does come up with buying, selling the old carts.
But just to give you an idea, it's part of losing, losing property.
The only thing I see is the collateral being new, you know, this collateral, the carts, well, you know, that's all that's value, your cars, it's not worth what you gave for tomorrow. That's all the problem I see with it. Saying, I mean, his collateral is the new carts.
Right.
And new carts, you buy a new cart today, it's not worth what, what you gave for tomorrow. I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna recoup your money on that collateral if you have to, you know, but.
You're not buying them, you're reselling them, you're buying them so that people will have a workable, it's a tool that you need in that business. It's like you had a tool, so.
Yeah, that's not the point, I mean, the collateral, any of it, is his carts, there's no other collateral there. Yeah, if he go double up or truck with a bunch of golf carts, they go there and money back.
Well, you, you would then go to the property. You would then lean the property.
Yeah, but he gonna be listening, the golf cart is collateral.
The rules say it's not collateral.
The rules say it's not collateral. Again, I'm gonna be Jan, because I told her I'm gonna be. I mean, she hasn't had a better borrower than this gentleman. He's always paid off early. I would tell you, for people like Conco, bringing in that factory, you know, we, we use the golf course, whether you're a golfer or not, I don't, I'm not a golfer, but we use that to promote our city. So. That's Jan's two piece.
So what happens with the money she was wanting to redo golf cart faster, did that not go through?
That did not go through.
Okay.
That was stopped. And that was not a loan.
No, it wasn't gonna be a loan.
Correct.
So what does council desire? You want to put this on hold to get its financial? You wanna go forward?
I think we need to put a table, just, we might all have to motion a table until we do get a little more information, the only thing I would want. If I like Rich to be there and get in the meeting on it.
Who's that?
I like every spark to be in before we do full ground, I think you ought to table tonight, that's Rich and the team, so I would second your motion to table it until next meeting. He doesn't.
So basically, is this, Kevin, is that your consensus as well?
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it either way, but we've got a motion, we'll do another one against someone.
We, we have a motion?
Yeah, that's what it sounded like.
He made a motion, I second it.
Okay, a motion, a table?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, motion, it may be seconded to table this until next meeting. All tables say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three, yes, and one no. So it's safe. So going down to the next item on our agenda this evening is, this here, the road closures on the Christmas parade. Chief, you wanna tell us those road closures?
The road closures that you're gonna have for Christmas parade? You have to come down Mon Street, come down fifty-six, around the first street, and then take down Wardell, back to the park, or back to the side heavily. Normal, what we usually have every year, normal line.
So Main Street, north of Wardell's close as well?
Yeah.
Okay. So any, any questions about road closures? Announcements? What announcements do we have?
I'd like to share with everybody that we had our fifth annual pigs and pamper's. We're at six, over sixty thousand diapers driving, so.
Awesome.
We still have quite a bit of donations been brought in and we're negotiating a bulk purchase as we usually do, so I really, I know the prices have increased, but I feel comfortable, we'll probably be able to meet or exceed what we did last year with the twenty thousand diapers, so we'll be able to make that donation to cradle here shortly.
You have other announcements there as well?
I was brought by Chuck Bastian's daughter, and that he was a long time, longtime board member for very, for a couple of years. She would like to know if the city would be, wouldn't be interested with a flock up or some, some will, will him get on. And I think probably the best place I'd be at the water department, the road to go to the plant, but.
Can you talk about it again? Can you talk about it again?
Chuck Sebastian.
Chuck Sebastian.
Yes, I might have kept something else. But yeah, I think, you know, just put a sign there and say Chuck Road or Chuck Sebastian Way, and that would be just kind of like a back of the water or something. Yeah, I mean, maybe he was a long, long-term board member of the park and the water department.
I was asking Kevin about, I think, did you not lose a person there?
Yes, we did.
And I, I did not remember that when I opened up here, so I should have had a prayer for him as well.
Yeah, we, we lost Michelle this past week, we found out about it Friday, so I know there's still announcements to be made as far as memorial service, but that'd be, to be determined, that's a part of the family.
At the time I knew her, I thought she was, she seemed like a wonderful woman.
Yes, yeah, she helped a lot of people.
So we're sure sorry, so for sure, for sure, for sure. Also, Halloween, day was changed. We, we are seeing somewhere over thirty-five, forty percent chance of rain, up to eighty percent chance of rain on Thursday, Halloween, so the day before Wednesday, the thirtieth, we showed no rain. So we've changed that, we like, we've contacted the superintendent, Scott School District Two, so that the elementary schools can announce that, we've put it on social media, WMPI's been contacted as well, so for kids coming out, it's gonna be Wednesday and not Thursday. And Rick, let's, let's take a look at what you're wanting to try to do there, so we'll, we'll talk about that.
Sure, yeah, there's no problem, you have to ask me yesterday, if the city might be at a rapid, and I'd way up city town, I mean, I would bring it up and, and, you know, we can talk around. We don't have any, any in this city tonight.
Okay, what, what other, what other?
I do have one other thing, I, I received a call and I was asked, I just mentioned, remember this, can we get the agenda added back onto the Facebook page? I know, I checked, the lady, the lady called me, said she had, we had it put on there since like June, but I know we need changes for holidays and stuff like that, I didn't know if we could get that added back onto the Facebook page or not. I don't remember I checked on it.
Yeah, sure, sure. Sure, I mean, we can? Yeah, sure. I, I'm not on Facebook, so, you know, I haven't seen it so far. So, so absolutely, we'll put that on there for you. What else? Mark, you got anything?
Hey Mayor, I'm not on the agenda, but I'd like to know where we stand with the Scottsburg championship basketball team's flags that was talked about putting up on the city, coming into the city. Where we stand with that?
Well, it's in the works.
Okay.
It's in the works.
I was asked about that just a few times, well, maybe more than that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We haven't forgotten, we haven't forgotten a lot of the law.
I told my division if I had an opportunity to tell it.
Appreciate that.
I kept my word.
Appreciate that, thank you, thank you. Anything else? Well, you entertain the motion to adjourn. Mark makes the motion, we're adjourned. Thank you, we're done.
I just think, I think we have to.